Yes, a very warm welcome to all of you to this special session on Integrated Business Solutions paper organized by Board of Studies academic. At its core, IBS is about breaking silos. Instead of looking taxation, law, accounting, costing, strategy, auditing separately, IBS integrates them into a single decision-making framework. Why? Because in the real business, decisions are not taken in isolation. A CEO, CFO, CEO cannot say this is only a tax issue or a strategic issue or a financial issue. Every decision has ripple effects across compliances, strategy, finance and operations. IBS promotes holistic solutions. That means considering financial impact, ensuring tax and legal compliances, evaluating strategic fit, incorporating operational efficiency. For example, suppose a company wants to expand internationally. It is not only about setting up a new branch. It must evaluate transfer pricing regulations, foreign exchange regulations, custom duties, financial structures and even brand positioning in the new market. One of the, one of the important learning from IBS is that strategies fails when compliances are ignored. Strategies are failed when compliances are ignored. Think about this, a company launches a price, a important, a very important pricing strategy, but, but ignore G, GST input credit restrictions under rule eighty-six B. The cash flow gets blocked, working capital suffers and the strategy collapses. In another case, a startup decides to raise funds aggressively through preference share, but if it ignores section fifty-five of Companies Act or Fama rules, the funding round can be legally stuck down. Investors lose trust and growth halts. In other words, compliance is not a backend activity. It is the backbone of strategic execution. IBS teaches us to connect the dots. Indias and strategy, the way intangible assets are recognized in balance sheet affects brand valuation and merger and acquisition strategies. In audit, in auditing and governance, how shrinkage in inventory is reported influence investors confidence. Similarly, regarding taxation, transfer of ITC or MEC provisions directly impacts pricing decisions and market entry. These are not isolated topics, they are interconnected. They interlink like gears in a machine. If one fails, the entire strategy can collapse. In real world, Walmart in Germany entered with a cost leadership strategy, but failed to adapt to local labor compliances and consumer laws. In a few years, it had to admit booking huge losses. Similarly, in case of Vodafone Idea, the acquisition of Hutch was strategically sound, but due to retrospective amendments in income tax law, the company faced massive tax litigation. A brilliant market entry strategy was weak due to compliances disputes. Similarly, Tesla in India wanted to bring in electronic vehicle at competitive prices, but high import duties and compliances structures delayed entry. These examples shows that compliances is not separate from strategy. It is a strategic enabler. Integrated Business Solution is about holistic thinking. Long-term decisions must integrate strategic vision, financial feasibility, legal and regulatory compliances, operational executions. Companies that align strategy with compliances succeed sustainably. Those that ignore compliances often face costly failures no matter how brilliant the strategy looks on paper. IBS is not just exam paper, it is about real business scenarios. Today, we bring interesting case study from case study digest. First case study is Maximo Limited. It covers section one ninety-six, section one fifteen JB two of Income Tax Act, computation of custom duty payable, section seventy-four A five of CGST Act, Indias eight, computation of overall equipment and evaluation of corresponding decision as well as section two forty-four and two forty-one of Companies Act. And another case study covers pricing, pricing decisions, GST input credit, Indias twenty-three borrowing cost, transfer of ITC rule eighty-six B of CGST rules twenty seventeen, as well as general disclosure on intangible assets. In our previous session, you are aware that in our previous session, we explored diverse industries to understand how strategy and compliance intersect with each other. In previous sessions, we have covered fast fashion, aviation, FMCGT sector, transportation sector, pharma sector. So many of case studies we have covered. All the case study material are available on the students portal. Today's session will be interactive. So students, please feel free to ask your question whether in Hindi or in English. You can either speak up or type your queries in the chat box or additionally last fifteen minutes will be reserved for your general questions or that may not be directly linked with your case study. We are fortunate to have with us C A T V Bala sir, T V Bala Subramanian sir, a well-known chartered accountant, his partner in PKF and having outstanding experience in audits. Sir is an active management consultant on project visibility study, business plans and structuring apart from handling numerous measure and acquisition assignments and internal audits. His expertise will help you to connect theoretical knowledge with practical business scenarios. With that, let us begin today's session and explore this insightful business case study. C A T V Bala sir, over to you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Good evening all, I hope you are able to see the screen, the presentation which I have put up.
Yes sir.
Is it visible? Okay, good.
Yes sir, yes.
Excellent. So as G was mentioning, it is very, very critical that you know any business strategy is also aligned with the compliances required alongside to make it successful. There are many cases of failures which have happened because compliance was not looked at when the business strategy was being developed. I'll just give an example before we come on to this case study. G was mentioning very, very important, why people should look at it in a holistic manner? Not only look at the strategy, business opportunity, et cetera, but also how compliance should be weaved in. This is an example from US where Wells Fargo was one of the early ones to look at cross-selling. Wells Fargo was a bank and it was, it, it went on a very, very aggressive mode to cross-sell products to its customers. So those who had a loan, they wanted to sell savings account, et cetera. Those who had savings account, they wanted to sell loans or other things. So credit cards, like this, they wanted to sell multiple products. Their idea was as a strategy that you get a bigger share of the wallet of all your customers because they are your customers already. So you can try and get better wallet share from them by doing aggressive cross-selling. As a business strategy, it was a fine strategy, fine probably, but they did not create adequate infrastructure and processes to ensure compliances were met, leading to many, many, many cases of fictitious accounts being opened or accounts being opened or credit cards being issued in the name of the customers without their consent, et cetera, leading later on to significant action on the bank for improper action and not meeting the customer's trust. So this actually went counterproductive because they did not address the compliances. We also know of the case of Volkswagen, which got into the diesel gate as they call it, right? So there also the strategy was to come with the cleanest diesel engine. That was their idea of this thing. Strategy wise, it was fine, but they did not back it with adequate process to ensure they are compliant with the regulatory requirements. They were, they were going to the extent of having cheat devices to show wrong results, positive results for the cars to be taken as meeting the requirements though they were actually not meeting it. So these are cases where the strategy failed because they did not take the compliances alongside. But these are some examples, there are many such examples. Very, very rightfully pointed out by my friend, very, very important to remember that. Now let's get into this case study. We are going to be seeing two case studies as he was mentioning. The first one is Maximo Limited, right? Here again, we are going to be talking about how you need to balance various compliance requirements and ambitions of various growths, et cetera. The background of this company was that it was incorporated in two thousand eight. So they were having business for long by one Anan, a renowned industrialist. He started it off, it got listed in BSC over a period. The paid-up capital became hundred crores, right? One crore shares which were there, approximately about thousand shareholders being there. The business was into dairy products and fruits concentrates, concentrates. So this is what they were doing as a production and sale businesses, right? Their operations were spread across multiple locations because they had to get raw material from various places. They had to get workforce in various places, et cetera. And you know, India is a large country also, so there is a need for a spread. A few specific issues we are going to be looking at. The first one was in the process of their expansion, et cetera. One of the things they did was they imported a machinery from the USA. This import was on a CAF basis on a hundred thousand dollar worth of material, right? So did they give actually the hundred thousand? Finally, they did not, they negotiated. So let's look at the details more. They also spent twelve thousand towards freight, US dollar, twelve thousand towards freight and USD eight thousand towards insurance in this import. Before the import was done, they had renegotiated the price to ninety-five thousand as against hundred thousand, right? And the exchange rates, because ultimately in India, we cannot account it in US dollars. It has to be in Indian rupees and all duty is, everything is in Indian rupees. So the exchange rate on the bill of entry date, which was twenty-fifth June twenty twenty-four was eighty-four rupees. Whereas by the time actually the material landed in India on seventh of July, the price had changed to eighty-two rupees USD. And the basic customs duty was eight percent on twenty-five, six, twenty-four, but because of budget changes, et cetera, on seven, seven, twenty-four, by the time it actually landed, it had become ten percent. Now the question is how these things are going to have an implication? We will be seeing about it when we go through. This is one of the key things which we wanted to touch on. Now here, what we need to learn from this multiple things which are coming in are that if you look at it, first and foremost, as per the, as per the customs valuation regulations, that is under section fourteen of the Customs Act nineteen sixty-two, are the customs valuation rules of two thousand seven, right? This has to be valued on a particular manner. Now what is that which is included for customs duty valuation? The price you pay to the end user, end seller, right? Plus, any insurance or freight, it is on CAF basis, the duty is computed. So the accessible value for computation of customs duty is on the price you pay to the end seller plus insurance and freight, all three will have to be included. So this is very important for one to understand. Additionally, I would also like to point out that if IGST is applicable, the IGST is payable on the CAF value plus the basic customs duty. So the IGST is calculated on the value including the basic customs duty. So this is another thing we need to understand from the GST regulations. So that is also something we need to be clear about. Otherwise, we might end up being the wrong amount. Then the next question comes as to which date is to be applied for the purpose of determining the applicable BCD. Now we saw that the rate was ten percent from seven, seven, when the actual physical material arrived and it was eight percent on twenty-five, six, which was the bill of entry date, right? So again, going by the Customs Act, section fifteen, one A, the bill of entry date, the bill of entry date is considered as the date on which it is presented for customs clearance. So this date actually has impact for the computation. The actual date of arrival is not relevant for the purpose of determining the duty rate. So in this case, the bill of entry date being twenty-five, six, that is the date on which the duty will apply and the duty of eight percent can be considered in this particular case. Similarly, when you come to the rate of exchange, right? For the rate of exchange also, it is on the same basis, the bill of entry date is what is to be considered. So what triggers is the rate which is notified on the date for filing of the bill of entry. This is in line with the section fourteen of the customs. So that is also another thing we can learn from this particularly. And like I said, IGST, which is payable on imports, is payable on the CAF value plus the basic customs duty, right? The second aspect which we are talking about in this company was that the company was expanding, it was thinking of setting up a manufacturing facility in Australia. So a huge jump and the project cost in Australia was about Australian dollars twenty million. They were thinking that they will raise funds through GDR via foreign currency bonds. So the idea is to sell to non-residents who are living in Australia to raise this twenty million AUD required for setting up the factory there. And for this purpose, the company had also appointed advisors, say J K Stanley, right? Who will advise on the structure, the pricing, the various regulations, timelines, all that. So this was a major expansion drive which the company was looking at. And to find that, they were looking to fundraise through GDR, global depository receipts, right? So that is also something we will discuss about in this case as we go forward. So there will be complexities, you have to look at the company law requirement. You have to look at first of all, the cost of fundraise, how much you should raise? If you have to get twenty million, how to do the pricing of the GDRs vis-à-vis the local shares, right? And what kind of other implications which needs to be considered? All this will have to be looked at. We will see that in one of the MCQs as we move forward into the session. So this is another area where the company was going. So they were looking at expansion, they are also looking at domestic expansion. So they had a high-quality private limited subsidiary where it was a hundred percent subsidiary, right? Here they were manufacturing the empty containers required for the main company. As you know, this company was into, you know, fruit juices and other food products. So it requires a lot of packing materials. So those packing material, empty containers, instead of buying from outside, this was a plan to do some integration, set up a subsidiary which can manufacture for your own requirements. So this was another backward integration to ensure that supplies are coming to you in place. They had highly automated production and they had TPM standards, et cetera. This subsidiary company was working on two shift basis, right? Obviously in India, eight-hour shifts is the norm for factories. So two eight-hour shifts they were working on and these shifts had a thirty-minute lunch break and a fifteen-minute tea break. So this is something which we need to factor. In a particular shift on tenth March, they produce two hundred bottles. And the standard cycle time required is two minutes per bottle. They also had losses of twenty minutes downtime plus ten percent scrap and rejection. So they were having out of the manufactured product, right? Which is containers in this case, say bottles, ten percent was getting scrapped or rejected because of quality reasons. So this is also a factor which needs to be considered. So in this high-quality private limited, what they were looking at is to identify what is the issue which is there in terms of quality and performance and efficiency and how that can be addressed. So we will see that also as we move in to the cases, right? See the amount of kind of different requirements which are coming up. Though the company is one simple, single company, so many different things come up. While all this was happening, there was an issue with some of the shareholders. We saw they had thousand shareholders, right? They had thousand shareholders and they had one crore shares. Hundred crore share capital of hundred rupees, one crore shares. So what happened? The, out of the shareholders, ninety shareholders came together who were owning ten lakh shares out of the one crore shares. They raised issue over extraction of groundwater, basically going into mismanagement. So they filed a petition for mismanagement with the NCLT under section two forty-one, two forty-two, et cetera. So this petition was filed in December twenty twenty-four, right? So that happened and then NCLT commenced the proceedings in February twenty twenty-five. So the court started hearing, the court started taking cognizance of the matter and started hearing both parties. But what happened subsequently in March twenty-five, forty of the shareholders who held four lakh shares out of ninety, forty shareholders and out of ten lakh shares, four lakh shares were held by them, they withdrew their consent to this petition. Originally ninety shareholders who are holding ten lakh shares gave consent for this petition, but in March twenty-five, after the NCLT commenced the proceedings, forty shareholders out of that who were holding four lakh shares withdrew their consent. Now the company secretary was wanting advice on what is the implication of all this and how they should deal with it. So this is another area which needs to be looked at. We will see it in more detail as we go into individual cases. On another side, there was a CFO resignation. Miss Manisha, who was a chartered accountant and company secretary and who was a CFO since two thousand nineteen, after roughly about five years, resigned in July twenty twenty-four. She had significant experience in finance, treasury, taxation and restructuring. So a very good hand, she suddenly resigned in July twenty-four and no replacement had been appointed in her place as said. The auditors who were mittal associates noted this and also noted and raised an issue that the financial statements were not Indias compliant. They raised issue saying there were errors in financial statements of twenty-three, twenty-four also, when they were looking at twenty-four, twenty-five already, right? Twenty-three, twenty-four also. Retrospect to policy change had not disclosed. So there was a accounting policy change which was implemented, but it was not implemented retrospectively and not properly disclosed accordingly. So they also raised issue. Maybe this, these kind of issues what triggered the CFO resignation? One need not make this thing, but yes, it's possible. But auditors also raised this issue. So the now company is asking for advice on what is the way forward on this. So that is also another thing which is cropping up. So a company as you can see can get issues coming from different dimensions. One was about the compliance requirement for raising GDR abroad and how to do the pricing for the GDR. On the other side, how do I ensure efficiency in my subsidiary, right? Which is one of the key critical component supplier or material supplier to the company for its business process, simultaneously to address the accounting issue and the CFO resignation on one side. So like this, multiple matters are coming up which needed to be addressed. So this is what happens in a general corporate scenario also. Why, look at this, if there are many departments, there has to be something to do with them also, no? So the GST also, they had a problem. They noticed that in November twenty-four, They noticed that in November twenty four, they had collected G S T at the lower rate than prescribed. So instead of eighteen percent, they had by mistake collected at twelve percent, say for example, right? And the G S T authorities had identified this and had issued a show cost notice. They have issued a show cost notice, the tax demand was six lakhs, that is the difference in tax, shortcut deducted tax was six lakhs. And the interest thereon was hundred and eight thousand. Because the tax had not been paid in time, there is an interest, so interest was hundred and eight thousand. The company has received the show cost notice and the company neither paid demand nor replied within thirty days. With all the various things happening, they did not even act on this, right? So this was another scenario which was pressing. So from multiple things, they were pressing issues and you are asked to come and give them consultation on. Advice on how to resolve the existing problems and move forward. So this is what was coming up. And let's see each of these as we move forward. With all this. You know, various sites, there are problems coming for the company, but that is how life runs. But business plans are not derailed, the company is also looking to grow, right? You cannot just stop everything and just only attend to this, you have to look at everything simultaneously, right? So the company was also looking for business growth. They found that there was one company called Shortspan, which was long back promoted by a brother of Anan in twenty twenty. And this company was in the business of manufacturing C D players. Now it has become obsolete because of, you know, nobody uses a C D player, right? It has become obsolete. The company went under C A R P. Corporate Insolvency Resolution Process under the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code of two thousand sixteen. So the company went under insolvency under I B C, which was admitted by N C L T. In June twenty twenty four. So by June twenty twenty four, this company called Shortspan had got into insolvency process. Right? With that. There is also to need to understand what was there under income tax in that company. There were mad brought forward losses, right? There was a. Financially at twenty one, twenty two loss of eleven lakhs and depreciation of sixteen lakhs. F I twenty two, twenty three, there was only a depreciation loss of ten lakhs. And twenty three, twenty four, there was a business loss of four lakhs and depreciation of three lakhs. So totally all put together twenty seven plus ten, thirty seven. Plus seven, forty four lakhs of losses of which depreciation amounted to twenty nine lakhs. And fifteen lakhs of brought forward business loss. So this company got acquired by. Maximo under I B C through a resolution plan. So the company also needed to understand how to deal with all this. Right? Here, there is a very important thing for us to understand, there is this concept of. Related parties and parties who are not permitted under twenty nine A of the. I B C regulations, I'm just briefly touching upon it, it's not directly related. So sometimes because the promoters are related, they could be. There could be uh under I B C restriction from them applying for a resolution plan. However, in the case of M S M Es, there is an exemption given for them to apply. So there are exemptions which are available where promoters or promoters related parties could also participate in the resolution plan. So we need to keep that in mind. Right, so let's move forward, so this is also another issue. So. The company has so many issues and they want some holistic advice. There is an import valuation problem, it's not just about one time, how to have that whole thing set up properly. So the example given is just an example, but what you really need is a process in the company to address that. There is a fundraising issue with regard to G D Rs, there is a efficiency loss in subsidiary which needs to be addressed. Then shareholder issue which has been raised under two forty one, two forty two in N C L T. Auditors concern about compliance with Indias. The show cost notice from G S T and the acquisition under I B C, so many things needs to be. Taken up and advised upon to the company. So let's look at these cases one by one as to how you will deal with it. In the form of M C Qs and some descriptive questions, but I will take you through them, right? I'm not sure how many of you have access to. Raise questions or put chats right now. So let me just see. If there is any. Messages, yeah, no. So I will take through these questions and how these are dealt with and what are the issues that. Let's take the G D R matter first, right? So we are talking about. We are talking about the G D R being. Raised. For the purpose of the expansion, so we know. We need Australian dollar twenty million, right? Australian dollar twenty million for us to raise the capital required. Now what is that else we know about it? Let's look at the full facts now for a moment, so that it gives us comprehensive clarity. So. The key facts which we need to understand and also consider is. We discussed that they had appointed J K Stanley as an advisor for various things, right? So basically an investment banker for the fundraise, right? Now. One of the things is, all these fundraisers have some cost. So the issue cost to raise money in the market, that costs money. So the issue cost, let's assume was five percent of the gross proceeds. So if you get hundred rupees collected, five will go towards collection, the issue cost, so only ninety five will come into your hands. Right, so this is the first thing which needs to be considered. Then. The market price of the share at the time of issue of G D R was expected to be three hundred rupees. Right, and the face value of share is hundred rupees. So the market price is expected to be three hundred rupees in I N R by the time we issue the G D R. And it is supposed to have a face value of hundred rupees. Let's also consider that. When the G D R is issued, each G D R will represent two shares, underlying shares, right? So two underlying shares and let's assume to make the share G D R issue. Attractive because you are issuing G D R and not shares which can be traded freely in India. You are going to issue at a ten percent discount to the market price. So if three hundred rupees is the share value, you are not going to issue considering three hundred rupees, you are going to consider it ten percent. Discount. Then you are going to issue it in Australian dollars, you need money in Australian dollars, all your pricing is in I N R. Now, we need to understand what is the Forex rate, let's assume the Forex rate is sixty, right? So in the context of this. In the context of this, let's see what is the requirement which is coming. How many shares you need to raise? So we need twenty million for the cost of the project. But we also know only ninety five percent will come to us, five percent will go as issue costs. So twenty million divided by point nine five, because only ninety five percent will come. Will mean we need to raise at least twenty one point zero five million to get twenty million cash, right? So if we have to raise twenty one point zero five million and what will be the issue price? The issue prices we said, three hundred rupees is the per share value. And each G D R will represent two shares, so three hundred into two, six hundred. But we are going to issue it at a ten percent discount, so into ninety percent, so five forty rupees will be the issue price. The same in A U D means five forty divided by sixty, which is the exchange rate, so nine dollars. So you are going to issue at nine A U D per share. Now the number of G D R which has to be issued to get twenty one point zero five million is two point three three nine million shares. Which is twenty three thirty nine one eighty one, so this is how you need to calculate the number of shares you need to raise. To be able to, a number of G D R you need to raise to be able to meet your cost. So there are other things also which needs to be considered and these things can significantly make a difference. Because a million A U D being raised less in Australia could. Seriously affect it's, it's a serious impact which it can have on your project viability because you don't have the money. So you need to ensure that all costs are considered and it is appropriately taken. So let's look at the next thing dimension in the same G D R itself, right? The. The buyers of the G D R, right, are going to have interest on G D R which is going to be paid. Because it's going to be issued as a bond, we saw that Forex bond, G D Rs, we are going to issue with the underlying shares as the basis when it gets converted. But till that time, it's going to have some interest paid. So it raises a question. As to what is the tedious it should do. Now that is the next thing to be addressed, now I have put specifically without considering D T A A, I will explain the implication of that also. But what is the interest T D S which needs to be done? So if you look at one ninety six C, any person responsible for paying interest or dividend in respect of bonds or G D Rs. Refer to in section one fifteen A C must deduct source T D S at ten percent plus surcharge. Plus higher education shares of four percent. So we said we will not touch upon the surcharge because it varies depending on the person. So. Only looking at T D S ten percent and four percent of H E C is just ten point four percent, right? Now, this is not enough, simultaneously, we also need to look at the implication of D T A A. Right, which is basically the. Mutual agreement between countries for preferential tax treatment to avoid double taxation. It's called Double Taxation Avoidance Agreement, D T A A. So India enters into such agreements with each country separately, some countries there might not be any D T A, right? So actually as D T A will go beyond your, you think I had said, without going into D T A at this point of time. Right, so we thought we'll also stick to this area of syllabus, but in real world, these are the various things which needs to be considered. And frankly, what happens is, it is not adequate just to look at the D T A A. To become eligible to claim under D T A A, you have to provide tax residency status, et cetera. There are certain requirements which will be there, and if you don't meet that requirement, you can't claim under the D T A. That is also another thing which will have to be considered, so. Just on the tedious one single question, there are so many factors to be considered and addressed. In a complex scenarios which comes up. Now. The other question we were talking about, right? We'll finish all these questions, go back to that slide of the seven key issues and see if there is something more we can discuss if there is any. But let's look at the other case, I think by and large, everything will get covered in these. We discussed about that company being under acquired under I B C, I also talked about. Where there could be promoters or their relatives being, you know, restricted from participating. But let's assume in this case they are not restricted, so they have participated and they have got the order in their favor. They've got the company, they have acquired. The question is about. The carry forward losses, whether that will be available. We saw Shortspan is a private limited company, which means it's not a company in which public are substantially interested, one. Two, under the uh income tax regulations, when there is a change in control, that is more than fifty percent shareholding changes hands. In a company where public are not substantially interested, then the carry forward losses lapse. So this is also in a point to be considered. So this company had. Twenty nine lakhs of. Depreciation loss and another fifteen lakhs of business loss carried forward. So what is the regulation saying that in a company when there is a change of more than fifty percent shareholding? In favor of new parties, there is no continuing shareholders of fifty one percent. Then the carry forward losses lapse. Now which carry forward loss lapses, is it only the business loss, is it the depreciation or both? That is also key to look at. Typically, it is only the business loss which is last, the carry forward depreciation is generally available. But in the case of I B C, there has been a specific exemption given saying that a company which is changing control. That is the shareholders are changing. Because of a resolution plan approved under the I B C, then that will be exempt from this restriction. So the carry forward losses will continue to be available to the company. Subject of course to all other things, so. The whole forty four lakhs will be available because this company is changing shareholding. Or it is being acquired and the change of shareholding is happening under a C I R P. In a Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code case, right? So this is the key amendment which was brought in a few years back to make it available in such companies specifically. Right? Then the next thing. Now we were discussing about the import of machinery and what is the various things which will apply. So the question is how much customs duty will come, so let's look at it. So like I told you, we start with ninety five thousand, which is the share value negotiated as against hundred thousand. And I said we will take the whole share value including freight and insurance. So we will take the ninety five thousand and the rate will be the rate applicable on the bill of entry date, which was eighty four. By seventh of July. By seventh of July, when the material physically came, the rate had become eighty-two, but that is irrelevant. The bill of entry date is what will be considered eighty-four percent and B C D at ten percent will be seven ninety-eight. Then, social welfare surcharge, et cetera, will get added. So, with that, it comes to eight lakh seventy-seven eight hundred. The question of G S T, we were talking about the G S T issue and that they had not even replied, et cetera. There, there is a penalty for wrong deduction, short deduction of G S T. So, you have to pay the six lakhs of G S T difference, you have to pay the hundred and eight thousand of interest for the delayed payment. Then, there is also a G S T penalty which comes because you had not deducted appropriately, you have failed to be compliant originally. So, how much is the penalty to be paid, right? So, if you look at it, seventy-four A, under which the showcase notice was issued, subclass five says penalty in case where any tax which had been paid or short paid, right? Then, the penalty shall be equivalent of ten percent of tax due or ten thousand, whichever is higher. So, it can be ten thousand, no, it is not ten thousand because ten percent of six lakhs is sixty thousand, which is higher. So, the higher amount always applies. If it was smaller, the minimum charge is ten thousand. So, the penalty of sixty thousand will apply in this particular case. See the amount of complexities which needs to be dealt with in the context of each of these case. Now, let's look at a few more cases coming from the same thing only. We were discussing about the issue where the auditor had said that the financial statements are not aligned with Indias and there are errors. And the error is going into the prior period also, right? So, what is it to be done under Indias to deal with errors discovered in financial statement? When you say errors discovered in financial state, it is financial statement has been issued, after that you have found errors in that, right? And also suggest the treatment, if such error is arising out of incorrect application of accounting policy as claimed by the finance manager of Maximo, right? So, there was also a saying that it is incorrect application of accounting policy. So, that needs to be also addressed. So, let's look at what is the way forward on this and what is it that the standards talk about? Let's look at what Indias says. Indias eight deals with prior period errors or omissions, et cetera. So, basically, if you see what is a prior period error, it says omissions from and misstatements in the entity's financial statement for one or more prior periods, right? Arising from a failure to use or misuse of reliable information that was available when the financial statements were prepared. So, for example, if it was not known, it could not have been known at that time, the financial statements were prepared. Then, it crystallizes only in the current year, so it's not a prior period item. Whereas, if it was reasonable to have been known at that time, it is considered as a prior period item. So, it needs to be addressed appropriately, right? Could reasonably be expected to have been obtained and taken into account in preparation and presentation of those financial statements. So, the earlier financial statements where there is supposedly a prior period error. If the underlying information which was a failure, right? If it is reasonable that it should have been expected and to have been obtained and taken into account, then it is a prior period error. It also goes on to say, such errors include the effects of mathematical mistakes, mistakes in applying accounting policies also, oversights or misinterpretation of facts and fraud, everything is covered in this, right? So, if there is a prior period error, then you need to rectify it. Now, how do you rectify it? Para forty-one of Indias eight says that error can arise in respect of recognition, measure, measurement, presentation of disclosure of the financial instruments. So, that is also another thing to be considered. Right? So, when an error is found, now what do you do? If it is a current period error and you are finding it during the audit before the financial statements are issued, you can rectify it before the financial statements are approved by the board itself. So, you can make the correction before it is issued. However, many times, material errors may be found only later in a subsequent period. Last year, twenty-three, twenty-four accounts has been signed, delivered, filed, everything. Now, you find that there are errors in twenty-three, twenty-four and maybe even twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever, right? So, now, how do you correct it? The standard says that you should correct it by correcting not only current year financials, but you should restate your comparative information on the previous year also by effect of that error in the previous era. If you had found it, what would have been the figure? That is what should take now. And you should also adjust it to the earliest opening period for which it is disclosed. So, for example, let's say twenty-four, twenty-five financials we are preparing now, we find a prior period error. So, the prior period error can be what? It can have impact for the previous financial year, right? Which is twenty-three, twenty-four and normally we give only two years in the financial statement, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-four, two columns only will be there, right? So, then which is the opening date, earliest date for which comparative information is given, which is one-four-twenty-two. So, any error prior to one-four-twenty-two should also get adjusted in the opening balance of resource. I will show you a classic practical example also now, right? So that it is clear and how interpretation is taken, also I will show just now. But before that, let's look at what is the expectation? Para forty-two deals with it, right? You should correct material prior period address retrospectively by restating the comparative amount, so the previous year comparative figures will have to be restated. If the error occurred before the earliest prior period presented, restating the opening balances of a certain liability. So, one-four-twenty-two, if the error pertains to previous years before that, one-four-twenty-two balances will also have to be revised and restated and presented. Now, we don't give the one-four-twenty-two balance sheet normally. So, it goes on to say that you give a third period presentation also in the financial statement. So, you present a third balance sheet in the financial statements. So, instead of giving two columns in the balance sheet, thirty-one, three, twenty-five, thirty-one, three, twenty-four, we will also add thirty-one, three, twenty-three or first April twenty-three. Three columns we will present, right? So, one second I will stop sharing and show you actual some balance sheets, how they have shown this. So, it will give a clear picture of how the disclosures happen. Is this visible?
Yes, sir.
So, this is an example of a public domain document of a balance sheet of Kutch Railway Company Limited. This is a balance sheet as of thirty-first March twenty-three. As you can see, normally we would just give only two columns, thirty-first March twenty-three and thirty-first March twenty-two. They have gone ahead and given a third column called thirty-first March twenty-one, right? This is where they have given the third balance sheet, that is all the changes. This is the revised figure as of thirty-first March twenty-one. If you go to the previous year's financials, the amounts representing here may not exactly match because that was before correcting the prior period error, right? So, this is something very interesting which needs to be looked at. So, let's also see down the line, what exactly is the issue in this? I am also going to give you another example. So, sorry, one more thing I can show you from this balance sheet which is very important for you to understand. This company has only presented the balance sheet with all the changes. But if you see the notes, they are not giving the third column necessarily, right? So, I just wanted you to understand that because that is not mandated. What is important is to make it presented in a manner which gives the reader the right information and the right understanding. So, they have put a whole balance sheet itself, third column. And if you see the here, this is the prior period adjustments, corrections and errors, right? So, here if you see, they are starting like this, statement of profit and loss account for thirty-first March. Depreciation was a figure which was corrected, it was fifty-four, forty-three lakhs. Now, it has been restated as seventy-two, fifty-six lakhs. Then, there was a deferred tax of nine eighty-nine, it has become sixteen twenty-two, right? So, the profit for the year was affected by these two, by an increase of eleven seventy-nine. Meaning, the profit had dropped by eleven seventy-nine, right? Similarly, it's not only the P and L which gets affected, various line items in the balance sheet also get affected. So, that is also shown here. But you can see that they are only showing the line items which have been affected, not all the line items. Because it doesn't make sense to show everything here. But then nobody will know where the adjustments have happened, right? And when it comes to balance sheet, you can see they have also given the impact as of thirty-first March twenty-one, right? And also the impact on E P S. All this is shown. Now, this is one example of how they have shown. In another example, we are going to see how they show differently also. Right? So, look at this company. In this company, let's go up and see in the balance sheet. In the balance sheet, you can see they have given only two columns. They have even gone on said restated last year, but they didn't give the third column. Third balance sheet is not given at all, right? But they have also given a detailed note. One fifty-four, yeah. They have also given a detailed note on what are the impact, restatement on account of prior period errors, right? So, here they have given a reconciliation, only an extract. They are also giving only those accounts which have been affected by the error and they have given the adjustments which are made in those errors, right? So, they have given for the balance sheet, they have given for the P and L. And if you go, they have given the opening, opening effect to other equity. What is the impact in the opening effect of other equity? So, here they have stated the impact of what errors were there, right? So, these are different ways of putting the same thing in presenting it, right? And they have given detailed note for each of the errors and corrections. All these are errors and corrections which have been explained here also. So, when they mean three balance sheets being given, three columnar. Now, interpretation varies. Some people give the full balance sheet itself in the financial statement like we saw in the previous case. And in some cases like this, in the balance sheet, they give only two columns. But in the note, they give the three columns explanations specifically. Now, which is better or which is the most appropriate? There are different interpretations. By and large, the industry takes a view that, you know, where too many items are having an impact on the balance sheets. Present the whole balance sheet. If it's one or two items, we present only in the notes with more detail. So, it becomes easier for somebody to understand. So, this is the background of how these are actually shown in the financial statements also. Now, with that, let's go back to what we were seeing on our main presentation. And please do feel free to ask questions anytime. Yeah. Yeah, I suppose back we are here and we can continue with this. So, as I was explaining, the three column, how it is being presented also, I was explaining. So, in the case of thirty-one, three, twenty-five, we will also show the change for twenty-three, twenty-four and also the change as of last April twenty-twenty-three, which is the earliest date being presented. Now, as we saw earlier, an incorrect application of accounting policy is also a prior period error and will have to be dealt with in the same manner, right? So, whether the finance managers claim that it is because of incorrect accounting policy or otherwise, the prior period error will have to be dealt with in the same manner. Okay. Right, let's go to the next item. We were talking about the subsidiary which was making bottles, the containers for the factory, right? So, this is a subsidiary which was making containers for the factory. There were issues with quality or efficiency. One doesn't know, that needs to be examined and that needs to be understood and some suggestions will have to be come up with, right? So, that is the next area we are going to look at. And in that, let's see what is that which is coming up. So, first of all, let's look at the plant production time. The total time available is what? Eight hours into sixty minutes, right? That's, that's perfect per shift, over eighty, very clear. Out of that, fifteen minutes tea break and thirty minute lunch break goes. So, balance available time for production is four thirty-five minutes, right? So, we also saw that there is a breakdown out of twenty minutes which is there. So, if you take four thirty-five minus twenty by four thirty-five, you really find that the availability of the factory is ninety-five point four percent. So, the availability ratio is ninety-five point four percent, which is four thirty-five minutes, which is which is four thirty five minutes, which is the time available, minus twenty which is the stoppage maintenance which happens, divided by four thirty five into hundred, which is ninety five percent. So out of four thirty five minutes available, four fifteen minutes are being utilized, which is ninety five percent, alright? So the actual production, if you look at it, it was two hundred bottles in that shift and it takes two minutes per bottle. So the standard time required is two hundred into two, which is four hundred minutes. Whereas the actual time taken is four fifteen minutes. We saw four thirty five minutes minus downtime of twenty minutes, four fifteen minutes. So what is the performance ratio? The first one is the availability ratio, the second one is the performance ratio. The performance ratio is out of four fifteen minutes when the factory was up and running, you got production standard time of four hundred minutes output, which is ninety six point three nine percent, say ninety six percent performance ratio. So the availability ratio was ninety five point four percent, the performance ratio is ninety six point three nine percent. Then the quality, the third parameter which needs to be looked at. The quality is in, we, we have, we should have, we have done two hundred bottles, but ten percent gets rejected. So the good bottles produced are one ninety, ah sorry, one eighty bottles, right? So for every two hundred produced, one eighty is quality approved, which is ninety percent. So the overall efficiency of the process as a whole, right? If you look at for this company, it is ninety four point, ninety five point four percent into ninety six point three nine percent into ninety percent, which is eighty two point seven six percent. So the overall efficiency is eighty two point seven six percent. Am I clear up to this? So eighty two point seven six is what we are looking at. Whereas the overall equipment effectiveness of eighty two point seven six is short of the globally recognized benchmark of eighty five percent. So the overall equipment effectiveness which is expected, right? By global benchmarks is eighty five percent. Now, okay, let's then do a component wise analysis. Availability ratio is ninety four point five percent, right? And performance ratio is ninety six point three nine percent. These both surpass the ideal benchmarks of ninety and ninety five respectively. So the globally recognized benchmark for availability ratio is ninety percent, which is surpassed in this case. Similarly, the global benchmark for performance ratio is ninety five percent, which also is achieved. However, the quality ratio is only ninety percent, whereas the global benchmark is ninety nine percent. Where the maximum is expected, that is where the efficiency is actually poor, right? So this clearly highlights where the issue is. The issue is in product quality. The defect rate of ten percent is very high. The defect rate of ten percent is very high, it is affecting the overall effectiveness completely. So now we know where the focus has to be and what needs to be improved, right? Whereas the availability ratio and performance ratio suggests that the machine is being used very efficiently and with minimal delays. So this is significantly alright, whereas the quality ratio indicates very, very critical challenges. So now what needs to be done, what can cause the quality problem? So it could be process inefficiencies, it could be material being substituted, could be insufficient operator training. So take the case of bottle manufacturer. If the glass, quality of glass input or silica input which we are giving for forming the bottle, right? Is not appropriate, that could affect the quality of the output. Second, if there are process inefficiencies, the amount of heat which you will have to maintain at different points and the pace at which you then cool it down, if that is not appropriately controlled and managed, it could create deformed bottles leading to scrapping against quality issue. If the operator is not trained well, the operator could make mistakes in the way he handles stuff and could lead to the output be having a higher default rate, right? So if you look at it, all these can affect the quality. So now that it has been identified that the quality is the problem, these are the things which needs to be looked at to try and bridge the gap. So once you do this, then you achieve total productive maintenance targets. So if you want to achieve the global benchmark of eighty five percent, now in this company, specific focus is required towards quality ratio and once that is addressed, everything will fall in place. So this is the kind of analysis which may be required. The last one which we are going to see on this case study is about the petition under two forty one. Now, the group of parties who have applied for this, right? Is hundred people, sorry, ninety people. Now, two forty one and two forty four, you have to see who can apply, right? Now, it says hundred members or one tenth of the total number of members. In my case, one tenth is also hundred because I have thousand members. Or members holding not less than one tenth of the issued shares. My case, one crore shares is there, ten lakh shares, right? So these ninety people hold ten lakh shares, okay? So applying that, number of people making petition ninety is less than hundred and is less than one tenth, so in those two classes it does not fit. However, the ninety people hold ten crores of my hundred crores capital. So one tenth of the paid up capital is held by them. So they are eligible to make the petition, right? So eligibility is determined. But we also saw that after the case was admitted in March twenty twenty five, forty members holding four lakh shares exited or withdrew their consent. Now that brings this ten percent by value to less than six percent or six percent. Because four lakh shares, if it goes, only six lakh shares is there, six lakh shares is only six percent, alright? So that is what happens. Now six percent is less than one tenth of the issued share cap. So then what happens? So here, the criteria we need to go by is that the consent to be given by the shareholder is reckoned when we at the beginning of the proceedings. The withdrawal of consent by any shareholder during the course of proceeding shall not affect the maintainability of the petition. So once it is filed, then it is for NCLT to apply its mind and do what is required under the act. It does not affect the maintainability just because some shareholders have withdrawn after the case has been admitted. So this is a case law from Rajmundri Electric Corporation versus V. Nagesharav, which clearly also laid this condition that the test happens at the time of admission and not later or not throughout the period, right? So once it is admitted, even if some members have withdrawn their consent later, the case continues and the NCLT can, yeah. So with that, I think I'm coming to my end of this particular presentation. So what we could probably do is, if it's all okay with you, maybe we can take its eight, sorry, seven fifty, a ten minute break or of, so eight o'clock we can reassemble and continue on the second case law.
Yes, sir.
Hi all, we are back and now we will look at the second case study for the day, which is on Welcome Industries Limited. Again, an interesting case which talks about various aspects including joint venture arrangement being made in India, et cetera. So let's look at it and what it brings up and what it can tell us. So just to give a background, Welcome Industries was established for more than twenty years, it has been there, headquartered in Mumbai, it has diverse presence across multiple industries and has a huge geographical footprint in India. So that is the group, Welcome Industries with multiple this thing business verticals. So if you look at their verticals, they are into yarn manufacturing, they are into petrochemicals, they are into telecommunications, they are into general insurance, so multiple industries. Right? So that is the background and this company is being led by Miss Singania, who's a respected business leader with strong ethical values, sharp business acumen, focused on core business fundamentals, the group has done exceedingly well over the period. So they are a well-established, large reputed group in India, right? So that was the background and with multiple business interests. So they had earned the significant credibility in the Indian business world, they are recognized for their diversified operations, so they are into multiple fields, right? So like most large groups are, they are into multiple fields, which is very important for them to be able to grow significantly and substantially. And they are known for responsible management practices, so they do the right things, right? So that is the Indian entity. There is this US entity called Melody Inc., they are basically a retail chain operator. They already have a strong presence outside of US, in Canada, United Kingdom, some parts of Central and South America and also in China. Their international performance has been giving them mixed results. It's been success in some places, it's not been so successful in some places, but they have been doing that, right? So they are in multiple parts outside of US, obviously Canada, which is just across, United Kingdom, they have gone over to the Europe, but not the rest of the Europe, Central and South America, where there is a huge market and China, they opened up in multiple places, right? This Melody Inc. has been considering an India entry strategy. Right? They have been trying to come into India and do the business. They have been planning the entry for more than two years and they have been struggling to design an effective entry strategy. Because India is, as we all know, is a different country altogether and expectations are different, managing requires different skill sets, right? So this is the position with the Melody Inc. in terms of what they were trying to do. So they decided to collaborate with Welcome Industries, so that is where they are coming together, right? Melody Inc. decided to collaborate with Welcome Industries to come into India. This was their strategy now. Now in this background, what they decided was they will set up a joint venture between the two groups, the Melody Inc. and the Welcome Industries in India. So the joint venture will be seventy-five percent held by Melody Inc., which is will be the majority shareholder and Welcome Industries Limited will hold twenty-five percent, right? It will also be headquartered in Mumbai because that's where W A L is also headquartered. It will be called as Welcome Melody Private Limited, W M P L, right? This was the plan. What is the strategic advantage and what each one brings to the table? W A L brings the nationwide presence and their optional strength in India. They have established operational strength in India and they have nationwide presence. Straight away, they are able to bring that. The JV gets the benefit of faster entry into Indian market, leveraging of local expertise and it also gets enhanced distribution and operational efficiency because of all the other things which W A L is doing and their nationwide presence and the operational strength that they have already established. Right? So what was the retail strategy? Their retail strategy was to establish and expand retail chain stores in India. The first store they launched in Mumbai. Obviously, always start with something, so they started with the first store in Mumbai, right? Their focus was to make customers visit memorable. So that way they thought they could get the customers to stay up and grow. The store concept was to be a one-stop supermarket, product range was to be wide, food and beverages, toiletries, garment, kitchenware, line and linen for the rooms, home appliances, so nearly everything which you need for a house, make it available there. This was the idea, right? And what was the market positioning they were looking at? They were positioning themselves as a value-driven retailer. Wide variety of products at competitive prices, so they will have the pricing because you know India is a price-sensitive market, so they also target was very clear. Indian price-sensitive customers was the clear target, right? So they brought in competitive prices. Their mission was to be recognized as the lowest-priced retailer. So this is the global thought and they brought it in here also, right? So with that plan, they were expanding and setting up facilities. And to enable this, they went in for investment in technology. Obviously, you need a very good point-of-sale system to enable retail operations to happen smoothly and seamlessly. As you can see in most retail shops today, technology plays a huge role in terms of making it very smooth operation of the purchase process, right? So this is something which they were looking and doing. So they went and invested in technology for that. So for this purpose, they bought a billing system, they bought a software for fifteen lakhs. Excuse me, sorry. And that fifteen lakhs payment, ten lakhs was an immediate upfront payment. Five lakhs is payable only after one year, not immediately paid, right? So though they had agreed on a price of fifteen lakhs, ten lakhs was immediately payable, five lakhs was payable only after one year. Then in addition to the cost of the software, associated costs were, there were legal costs of seventy-two thousand, there were consultancy fee for implementing this at one lakh fifty thousand and their cost of capital was considered at ten percent. Now the question comes, how does one go about accounting this, right? So this is also something we will look at in terms of how to account for the software costs. Then in terms of the pricing strategy, their core strategy was to have aggressive low-cost pricing. Some products were priced below cost of procurement. The reason for the whole thing was they wanted to attract customers, they wanted to boost store footfall. Most importantly, they wanted to disrupt competition. They wanted to disrupt competition, so they essentially wanted others by cutting the price down, they wanted to run others out of business. Essentially, that was one major target in this plan of how they were looking at the pricing. That clear? So with all that intent, they started this off in terms of pricing. So what was that they were looking at in the pricing model? The short-term benefits was rapid sales growth because you are pulling customers away from competitors, you are disrupting the competitors and taking their customers and their business to you. By doing that, you are also creating a strong brand visibility. Of course, in the long term, there could be pressures on profitability if you continuously keep selling below cost. Then there is a need to balance sustainability with a value promise. One of the mission statement is to be the lowest-cost supplier in the markets, retailer in the market, right? Low-cost sub-retailer in the market. So that value promise has to be maintained. At the same time, you have to run it in a sustainable manner so that there is reasonable profits for it to make business sense to run. So there has to be a strategic trade-off of growth versus financial health in this whole process. You cannot do one at the cost of the other. Now, very frankly speaking, so many of the platforms today are running like that, they are, they are basically trading of financial health for growth. They are actually taking capital and spending to cover running operational costs, they are taking capital. This is what is happening today. So many of these things have costs which are more than their revenue. Some of the platform companies today, you might notice that their costs are far, far, far higher than the revenue they are making, no comparisons. The losses they are making is more than the revenue. That is the kind of scenario they are going to, that is the extent to which they are going to do it. It's all part of a strategy, right? Now, in this case, let's come back to Melody, right? Melody Welcome. So this W M P Ls also was looking to expand from Mumbai. They wanted to expand into Nasik, Nagpur, Aurangabad everywhere and they decided they will own the property rather than lease it. Owning the property meant higher capital outlay, you have to pay upfront to buy the properties, right? Of course, if you, you avoid long-term lease rental costs which keeps spiraling after some time, right? So some balance trade-off they were looking at. They expanded to twenty-five stores across India. I was mentioning that now one of the biggest strengths for W A L is their presence across India. So because of their existing presence across India, they could easily operationalize stores across India in multiple locations simultaneously. So they have ended up having twenty-five stores across India. So this is the kind of expansion which was happening. And to fund all these growth, they took a thirty-five crore loan from Melody Inc., the parent, seventy-five percent parent, paid a thirty-five crore loan to the W M P L at a interest rate of eight percent per annum. Let's not go into the eight percent whether comparable, all that transfer pricing issues, but let's take it at eight percent for that thing. What were the benefits coming from this? There was access to long-term funding, right? And it's in the nature of support from holding company which is even better. The risks were that there are increased financial commitments, you will have to pay interest on all these loans. There is also higher leverage pressure, you are borrowing more, right? So your leverage is high. So these are the issues which they are the risks which they face in this kind of a business model which they have put up. So this is one side, they were expanding. Looking at their financial performance for twenty-four, twenty-five, they made a bit of nine crore with all this, they made a bit of nine crores, which is good. They paid an interest expense of two-point-eight crores to Melody Inc. on their loan, right? So we saw no thirty-five crores they have borrowed, so they have to obviously pay interest on that. So thirty-five crores, eight percent is two-point-eight crores of interest. The net profit before tax was approximately six crores and tax of approximately one and a half crores and a part of four and a half crores. Very good performance by them in terms of having come this far, right? It's been positive. So what is the insights from the financial results? They have maintained profitability despite aggressive low-cost pricing. We saw that one of their key things is aggressive low-cost pricing, which also goes to show that they are doing significant volumes, they are also having significant buying efficiencies, et cetera, and maybe less shrinkage, less inventory carrying costs, et cetera. So faster churn. But the right products, right? They have a strong EBITDA margin which supports future scalability. The interest costs of course remains a key burden, two-point-eight crores is substantial amount, that one-third of the EBITDA is gone, the interest. Obviously, there is a balance required between growth investments and long-term profitability, right? So you continuously keep on expanding, then that takes on aggressively takes on capital or loan, which would put a strain on. They were looking to expand into Pune, right? They started a new store for which land was purchased. Then at this point, they decided even though they are in Mumbai already, they decided because Pune is separate and Pune has to have its own this thing, they decided for Pune, they will get an extra new GST. Though within Maharashtra, they will take a separate GST for Pune, right? And they also determined how they will go about the stock procurement, et cetera, right? So the business operations has started with a separate GST for Pune unit. So now they have two registrations, one for Mumbai, one for Pune within Maharashtra for GST. So on the asset and GST position, that point was that fixed assets, if you look at it, the company as a whole had four-hundred crores, Pune had twenty-two crores. Current assets total was five-hundred crores and Pune had fifty crores. Assets eligible for I T C was hundred-and-sixty crores and Pune forty crores. Unutilized GST credit because earlier it was altogether under one GST, twenty-five crores was there. Unutilized GST, right? Now they have to decide what amount to transfer to Pune for GST. So as against four-hundred crores of fixed assets, twenty-two crores belongs to Pune. In current assets out of five-hundred-fifty crores belongs to Pune. Now the question is how much GST can be transferred? So as we were discussing Pune as a separate GST registration, So as we were discussing Pune as a separate GST registration, the management thought. That they will transfer two and a half crores to Pune. What was the basis they had taken? They had said. Out of five hundred crores current assets and current assets is what generally generates I T C. Out of five hundred crores current assets, my Pune is making up ten percent, fifty crores. So out of twenty-five crores also ten percent, two and a half crores we will transfer. So GST you need to transfer from one GST number to another. This is how they thought they will transfer two and a half crores. And what was the objective? To have some I T C in Pune so it becomes cash flow easy on Pune's operations. They get liquidity, they get some credit to adjust GST payments on ton month. As they start the business and do the business, right? So the question is, is this method correct? Whether the ratio of current assets is appropriate to look at? From a compliance perspective, rule forty-one is to be looked at. And from a filing perspective, this has to be done through filing GST I T C zero-two form. The regulation says that it must match the ratio of value of assets and not just current assets. So we have to take the total value. So if you take the total value, what is the case? The total value is four hundred crores of assets and five hundred crores of current assets, totally nine hundred crores. Of which Pune had twenty-two crores of non-current assets and fifty crores of current assets, seventy-two crore. So seventy-two as a percentage of nine hundred is eight percent and not ten percent. So out of twenty-five crores total I T C which is there, only eight percent can be transferred to. This entity. Right? That would be the more appropriate interpretation in this case. Am I clear? Then. Let's take it forward to the next area. You know, in all retail operation, inventory shrinkage is one key concern. What is inventory shrinkage? Inventory shrinkage is. Sometimes you will low, do some material because of. Misbilling. Miscounting, sometimes there could be some pilferage, all that together it's called shrinkage. So in a retail shop, you have a million items which is there. It's not easy to keep exact one-to-one track of everything and be able to. Account for every single piece. It's not like you have some ten big items which you can always keep track of. These are. Millions of items, some of them very small. So, one of the things in retail industry they do is a continuous stocktake by which. They update their system with any shortages. Because if you don't do continuous inventory and update your system. Your system will show as though there is some material, but when you go physically to pull out some material, it will not be there. So you can't sell. Right? Though it is there, you can't sell, customers will get dissatisfied because you will think there is inventory, so you won't buy. More material, but when the customer goes and sees, there will be no material on the shelf. So one of the things they do is a continuous stocktake and continuously update these shrinkages into the system. And they also meticulously monitor the level of shrinkages to ensure it is not significant. So in this company, it was found that the current assets are around five hundred crores, of which inventories were three hundred crores. A provision for inventory shrinkage of fourteen and a half crores was made. Right? A provision of fourteen and a half crores was made. The shrinkage involves a lot of judgment and periodic counts as he was mentioning. Now, fourteen and a half crores on a nine crore EBITDA is significantly material. Right? I hope you understand the materiality from that perspective, from an audit perspective. Fourteen and a half crores on a. Nine crore EBITDA significantly material. But assuming that three hundred crores of inventory gets turned around four times in a year. Even assuming four times, actually in retail it will be much more, assuming four times, it's thousand-two-hundred crores. On thousand-two-hundred crores, fourteen and a half percent is less than a percent or around a percent. Right? So. From that perspective, shrinkage may be not so material, but from a financial statement perspective, it's a material area. So it is identified as an audit focus area by audit. It can significantly impact the profitability or reported profitability of the company. Right? So because of this, what is the audit approach they took, the auditors? They gained understanding of internal controls. They understood what is the internal controls which are in place. They evaluated the design of controls around inventory accounting, right? So how do they do the. Uh, periodic count process, the continuous inventory and how do they keep track of it? How do they. Uh, do cross-comparison across stores? How do they ensure that certain uh. Segments within the inventory is not getting high pilferages or high shrinkages? All that they looked at and how it gets accounted also, how frequently they make these provisions, how they reverse the provision made, et cetera. All that they looked at. Then it's not only the design of controls, they actually tested the operating effectiveness because these are critical controls, right? So tested operating effectiveness of the controls by seeing whether physical stocktake is actually being done, who is doing it, whether it has been. So by observation, adding some people from your team to that, to see whether they are doing it appropriately, right? And then once the information comes from that, how exactly it is getting. Accounted for in the system so that they. So that the costs are also properly captured in a timely manner. Okay? So this is what they were doing. And then going from there. They concluded. That there is a reasonableness of provision for shrinkage. So fourteen and a half crores looks big, yes? But the auditors took it as a focus area. They looked at the internal controls, they evaluated the design of controls, they tested the operating effectiveness, everything and then. They came to a conclusion on the reasonableness of the provision. So this is what the auditors did. Because any focus area, they are also supposed to expect it to address appropriately. Right? Then. The next thing they were looking at is WMPL is being exp- expanding, expanding, expanding. In the process of expansion. They came across an opportunity to acquire securities of X Y Z Limited, which was in a very, very. Uh, financial distress stage, right? So the board sought professional consultancy before proceeding. The consultant gave a view. The distressed securities which you are going to look at buying gives you high risk or high reward. Success depends on a balanced allocation between debt and equity in putting into that kind of a environment. Right? So this is also something which they were looking at. How much of debt and how much of equity, what kind of a position we should take? On debt and equity there. In a. Investment into. Investment into this uh. Uh, distressed company. Right? So this is something they were clearly looking at. Now, in this context, let's look at specific items and how each one was dealt with, right? In detail. Arriving from this case study of. Welcome Melody Private Limited going big and expanding in India, right? So the first question is going back to that software which we were talking about. At what amount software purchase for POS should be capitalized initially? Using the principles of concerned India's. So what was the amounts they were spending? They were spending fifteen lakhs on the software per se. Of which ten lakhs was to be paid immediately, five lakhs after one year. Then there was also additional costs of legal fees seventy-two thousand. Consultancy fees of one and a half lakhs. And all this in the context of a cost of cap of ten percent, right? So let's look at it. Ten lakhs you are paying immediately, yes, you must include it, you must capitalize it. The five lakhs which you are going to pay after one year, should you capitalize it or not? What is the difference between money paid today and money going to be paid after one year? So if there is a significant financing portion, then that needs to be appropriately considered in the value. Right? Appropriately considered in the value. So what needs to be seen is. What needs to be seen is that we should, yes, somebody has put that suggestion also. Because there is a significant financing component, you need to discount it and the cost of cap is ten percent. So five lakhs into one by one-point-one, ten percent more, right? So that is the amount you will capitalize for that. So let's take the next slide where all these are coming, right? Then the legal fees is directly related to this contract, so that can also be added. And the cost of implementation, the consultancy fee paid for implementation of one lakh fifty, that should also be added. So ten lakhs plus four fifty-four, which is the five lakhs, current present value of five lakhs. Plus seventy-two thousand for legal fees and one and a half lakhs for implementation consultancy. Sixteen-point-seven-six lakhs is what would get capitalized. Right? So sixteen-point-seven-six lakhs gets capitalized in this process. So here we are looking at the India's concept of significant financing component. Which we are giving, addressing. The initial payment versus deferred payment, we are looking at the implication of it. We are also looking at what comprises the cost of an asset, right? What other payments, right? Directly attributable cost of preparing the asset for its intended use. So without the consultancy fees for implementation, you can't even have it. So all these are costs directly attributable for that. To bring it to here. So it's added a capitalist. The next thing we are going to talk about is the pricing strategy adopted by WMPL. What is it commonly called as and. What are the different practices which are there? Right? Any thought on that? Any thought on uh. Which pricing this is? Okay, let me give you a answer. But before that, yeah, I think some people are putting thoughts, so let's look at that. Someone has said answer C. Someone else has said answer C again. Right? Predatory pricing, answer C. Right? Answer C is right. I will come to that and also the slight differences which are there, which could make it this thing. I will talk about the four, all four. The first is loss leader pricing. Loss leader pricing basically. Is selling a product at a loss to stimulate sales, that is you want to get sales, right? Of other profitable products. So what you want to do, you want to sell something at a loss. To attract customers into the store or website. Where you expect them to be buying other things which are priced well. Right? So this is known as a loss leader pricing. The second which was mentioned there is a price discrimination. Price discrimination is where you are charging. Different prices to different customer groups. So you target based on the willingness to pay and accordingly you charge them differently. For example, if you take uh. Some this thing, there will be discounts for students, there will be discounts for senior citizens. Right? So this is another thing by which you target pricing differently. So this is price discrimination. Now, a predatory pricing. A predatory pricing is where you are selling temporarily at low prices, sometimes even below cost. With a key focus to drive your competitors out. So you are trying to gain share from your competitor and to gain that share from your competitor, you do a predatory pricing. You do a below-cost or low-cost pricing. This is called as predatory pricing. In our case, that is what we saw was the primary objective of their initial low pricing. Penetration pricing is different slightly. Penetration pricing is to reduce prices for new products. With an intent to gain market share and enter, but it is not necessarily for focused on. Focused on destroying competition. This is more about entering a market, right? To make that initial connect. You do that, that is penetration pricing versus a predatory pricing. A predatory pricing is knowingly trying to kill your competition. This is the key difference, right? Okay. Now, the next question is about the securities which are available and especially in the distressed company X Y Z, right? What strategy should be followed by WMPR to ensure that investment in securities of X Y Z is profitable? The options are A, taking long position in debt, short position in equity. B, taking long position in equity and short position in debt. C, taking long position in debt and long position in equity, both long positions. Four, taking short position in debt and short position in equity, both short position. Any thoughts on this? Any idea of what is the long position and the short position is? Yes, somebody has some comments. Why debt sell equity, which means answer A, right? So, someone has said answer A, yes. Good, someone has said B. So, we are having opposite views also. Okay, so let's look at that. A is the right answer, why, right? If you take a long position in the company's debt and a simultaneous short position in equity, we saw this is a distressed company already, right? We saw it as a distressed company already. So, what is the advantage you will get when you are looking at a long position in debt and short position in short position in this thing? What do you call that? Equity, right? So, what happens is if the company does well, the company does well, then what happens? Your equity will do better. Your debt will also give you better returns. Actually, you might get returns from the debt, right? And if the company doesn't do well, you will still be able to get some returns from the short. So, overall, in a distressed entity, this is where you can get the benefit of taking a long and short position. Right? Let's look at the next one. So, this is what we were discussing earlier also, right? So, what were we discussing? We were discussing about the about the amount of input credit to be transferred. Whether it should be two and a half crores, I also explain how it should be two crores. So, the answer is already known, right? Two and a half crores is incorrect. And B, the amount calculated should be two crores is the right answer. So, let's look at it once more. The rationale is the total assets is 900 crores. It's not based on current assets, it's based on total assets. And the Pune's share of total assets is 72 crores, which is 72 by 900 is 8%. So, total ITC is 25 crores, 8% of 25 crores is two crores. That's how two crores comes and two crores is the right amount to be transferred. Now, under GST, if you do not do these appropriately, then you will have a huge implication coming because of the erroneous transfers, right? Okay, so next we will see the next question. Yeah, we saw this only, so we'll go to that. Now, we saw about what the auditor did in respect of shrinkage in inventories. Now, how should it get reported in the audit report in case WMPL was a listed company? We know WMPL is a private limited company, but in case it was a listed company, how will it get reported in the audit report, right? The auditor should report the issue of shrinkages in inventories in emphasis of matter paragraph and also state how the matter has been dealt with by the audit team. Or, the auditor should report the issue of shrinkages in inventories in other matter paragraph and also state how the matter has been dealt with. The C possibility is the auditor should report the issue of shrinkages in inventories in other matter paragraph and he need not talk about how it has been dealt with. Fourth is, the auditor should report the issue of shrinkages in inventories in key audit matter paragraph and also state how the matter has been dealt with by the audit team. So, there are four options here, A, B, C, D. What do you think is guess? Okay, somebody is saying A, answer is D. Someone saying option A, UAM paragraph. Right? So, let's look at each of these, right? Before we look at the answer, emphasis of matter paragraph is required when there is a matter of critical importance which has been appropriately dealt with in the financial statement, but is of such critical importance to bring to the attention of the reader to be able to get the proper understanding of the financial statements, right? That is where emphasis of matter is required. For example, yeah, somebody talked about going concern. In the past, going concern used to be part of emphasis of matter paragraph. Now, there is a separate requirement for going concern called material uncertainty. So, that is one area. Let's assume for a moment there is a significant case and that determination of that case might decide on the fate of the company. For instance, let's suppose it's a mining company and the case is about the license for the mining. Now, obviously, depending on how the case gets determined, the company's whole life is based on that. So, assuming that this has been shown as contingent liability with complete disclosure, etc., it has been properly dealt with in the financial statements, but still it is in the, in the eyes of the auditor. It is critical for this being brought to the attention of the reader of the financial statement. So, that is why it comes in the emphasis of matter paragraph, right? So, that is the first thing. Now, what is other matter paragraph? Other matter paragraph is where there had been some restrictions or there were some impediments to the audit process. For example, the previous share figures were audited by a different auditor. It's a other matter paragraph item. It is not an emphasis of matter paragraph, it's a other matter paragraph item. Similarly, let's say the auditor appointment happened late because of which inventory verification could not be participated in, right? It's an other matter paragraph. So, all other matters are what applies in case of, sorry, what applies in case of anything to do with the audit matters, right? So, that's what will come under other matter paragraph. So, C also is covered by that. So, D is key audit matter paragraph. So, this is a new thing which was introduced mandatory for listed companies and for some large companies. It could be optional where they consider it, it's important to present. So, in the case of listed company, what you given camp, it is the key audit matter, right? What are the few areas which the auditor thought was very, very, very critical and they spent a lot of their time and efforts in addressing that? So, we saw how shrinkage can be a significant impact to your EBITDA or profitability. At PAT level, if you see as against the four and a half core PAT, we are talking about a 14 and a half crores provision. So, it is very significant and because of that, the auditor had done extended audit work on that. So, under the key audit matter paragraph, the auditor is expected to mention this and give also the various steps as to how he has dealt with in the, in the conduct of audit, this particular area, right? So, this is a key audit matter item. So, this is something we can take as a learning from there. Then let's look at some more issues. So, this is in more detail, right? About how the profit can be made from distressed securities by taking a long position in debt and short position in equity, we were discussing this earlier, right? So, essentially, let's look at the case. In case company's condition improves because of priority, the investor will get this interest payment, which will be more than dividend on a short position in equity charge, right? Then, if company's condition further deteriorates, both value of share and dividends goes down, he will make good profit from his short position. So, either way, he will benefit from the transaction like this in a case of a distressed entity. So, this is what we were seeing earlier also, same thing it's coming. Now, let's look at the next question. Accounts department of WMPL is filing GSCR 3B for the month of September 25. The total taxable supplies are 50 crores with output GST liability of 6.25 crores on 50 crores, right? So, on 50 crores, 6.25 crores works out to be the tax liability arising at multiple rates, different rates, all put together 6.25. Input tax available in electronic credit ledger is seven and a half crores and the balance in electronic cash ledger is 75 lakhs. Now, whether WMPL is mandatorily required to utilize the balance in electronic cash ledger while paying GST liability? Also, state the nature of documents on the basis of which ITC would have been taken by WMPL. So, two parts, right? Let's look at each one. So, first and foremost, how can they adjust this? Should they use that 75 lakhs mandatorily? Because it's already there in cash, electronic cash ledger. Any thoughts on this? So, someone has said 1%, right? That's a very valid indicator and important indicator. 1% of liability will be paid in cash. So, let's go and look at the criteria. The regulation CGST rules 86B, rule 86B says that if the taxable supply exceeds 50 lakhs in a month, right? So, it's not applicable for small entities, for bigger entities, 50 lakhs for the month. Then, 86B says that credit ledger can be used only to the extent of 99% of the output tax liability and 1% at least must be paid from the cash ledger. So, the idea is that they have said, they have tried to bring in this thing that large GST payers at least pay 1% of their liability in cash. So, they don't just set off, set off, set off everything always, right? So, this is the idea. So, right now it is at 1%, maybe tomorrow they move, change, etc., but as of now, 1%. This way, they will be able to get some cash coming from the larger larger parties who are part of the GA system. So, anywhere where the taxable supply value is not in excess of 50 lakhs, this rule does not apply. So, there you can adjust 100% also, right? So, this is something which needs to be borne in mind. So, strictly speaking, only 1% has to be paid, the 75 lakhs doesn't have to be paid. So, 1% of it is 6.25 lakhs. So, 6.25 lakhs can be paid from the cash ledger. The balance approximately 6.19 lakhs can be paid from, sorry, 6.19 crores can be paid from the ITC ledger. That is the electronic credit ledger, right? Hope that makes it clear as to how it can be paid. Now, we were also talking second part of the question about documentation requirement, right? So, the nature of documents on the basis of which ITC would have been taken by WMPL are invoice or revised invoice issued by the suppliers of goods or services, goods or services. Invoice issued by the recipient receiving goods or services from unregistered supplier. In case of reverse charge, subject to payment of tax, right? So, if there is a reverse charge subject to payment of tax, that is also considered. Debit notes issued by the supplier. Bill of entry or similar document prescribed under customs act. Why is this so? There is also IGST we pay on import. That IGST can be taken as ITC input credit. So, that will also come, that comes through the bill of entry or similar document prescribed under customs act. Then, any documents issued by the input service distributor. There are some ISD GST registration which the company can have. This ISD GST registration then can be distributed. The amount available in that can be distributed to the various GST registrations within the company and that can also be considered and that documentation is also important to consider, right? Now, we come to what is the disclosure requirement with regard to intangible assets, right? Including acquisition of a stock. Now, obviously, everything is by materiality, but we are going to be looking at some of these things now. The entity should disclose for each class of intangible assets as per the standards, whether the useful lives are indefinite or finite. Only for intangibles, there is a question of indefinite useful life. For tangible assets, there is no such concept, indefinite useful life, right? So, intangible assets, you have to determine whether the useful life is indefinite or finite. Now, when does it become indefinite? For example, it could be a brand. You may consider that the brand has indefinite useful life. So, you are not taking this thing, but there are certain other things to be done in such case. However, let's come back to the finite case. If the useful life is designed that as finite, the actual useful lives which are used for amortization or if you are using amortization rate, that is a depreciation rate kind, right? A percentage, then that amortization rate used must get disclosed in financial statement or the accounting policy. The method of amortization used for the intangible assets with finite useful life is the next thing to be given. It could be straight line method, it could be W D V method, it could be some other methods based on utilization etcetera, right? So this is the second thing which needs to be included in the disclosures in respect of intangible assets. The third is the cross carrying amount of the intangible asset, that is the original cost of all the intangible assets which are still in use in the company. That cross carrying amount will have to be disclosed. Then, the accumulated amortization. That accumulated amortization will also include any impairment losses provided now or in the past. So that also has to be disclosed. This has to be disclosed as at the beginning of the period and as at the end of the period. Which means basically you have to give movement also, right? So the gross carrying amount of the amortization, including any impairment loss at the beginning of the period, at the end of the period, will have to be disclosed. Then, the line items of the statement of profit and loss in which any amortization of intangible assets is included. So generally what is done is, in the Indian way of presenting is depreciation and amortization is a separate line. In that, how much is coming as depreciation from tangible assets, how much is coming as amortization from intangible assets, how much is coming as amortization from R O U assets are shown with break up. So the intangible assets amortization where it is included in the P and L should also be visible and disclosed. Then the next thing is a reconciliation of the carrying amount at the beginning and the end of the period. So we saw that at the beginning and end of the period, we are going to give the gross carrying amount as well as the accumulated depreciation. So now this talks about a reconciliation between the opening and closing. So what all we need to show? Additions indicating separately those from internal development and those acquired separately. So you have to give three things separately. Internally developed, acquired, acquired through business combinations, right? So these have to be shown separately. Then, assets classified as held for sale are included in a disposal group. So whenever an asset is classified or held for sale, it will be removed from the intangibles also, like tangibles, intangibles also, it will be removed and shown as a separate line item in the balance sheet as assets classified for as held for sale or asset disposal group classified as held for sale, depending on how we are. So that movement also will have to be shown. Then, if there are any increase or decrease from revaluation. If there has been a revaluation of the intangible asset, right? Whether it led to any increase or decrease and then if there were any impairment losses. Either losses recognized or reversed, so that also will have to be shown. Then similarly in the P and L, what impairment loss has been taken in P and L? Then, what is the amount of impairment loss reversed in P and L? How much was taken in O C I, how much was reversed in O C I? Any amortization recognized during the period, that is how much is the amortization charged to P and L during the year? Then any exchange difference adjustments which are related to intangible assets. And if there are any other changes in the carrying amount during the period, that could be disposal, that could be uh write down, right? Or abandonment, all that will also have to be shown. So, a complete reconciliation between opening to closing will have to be presented very clearly. Then, the conditions for re-recognition of intangible asset, so I was telling you on disposal etcetera, you will remove. So when you should re-recognition, so we keep on adding to the grass block, so when we should re-recognition? So the first thing is when it is disposed. So when it is disposed, obviously you will have to remove the grass block as well as the accumulated depreciation for that asset. Which includes an intangible asset, right? The second possibility is when no future economic benefits are expected from its use. So, the brand was there, the brand was used and the license period is over. I have depreciated it fully also, but I am never going to dispose it because it's not my asset to dispose. So at a point like that, what is to be done? What is to be done? At that time also you should remove it from the grass block because it no longer is an intangible asset. Though it is fully depreciated and it does not have any impact on the carrying value ultimately. From the grass blocks and accumulated depreciation, it should be removed, right? Because this also in a way is a disposal, that is you are abandoning or your period is over. It can no longer be giving you any benefit. Now somebody has asked a question, is movement in revaluation surplus also to be disclosed? Now, we are talking about what is to be disclosed in intangible. There, any revaluation addition to the intangible or revaluation deduction to the intangible will have to be shown. Revaluation surplus will come at the reserves, there also you will have to show the movement coming from various revaluations. Yeah, someone has put on sale, transfer, donation, dissolution of the firm, company is closed, partition of which you have anything and everything. Or which leads to the asset no longer being there will have to be appropriately shown. That's one of the disposal, right? The disposal can be by any means whatsoever. Yes, someone has raised a valid point. If there is a change in model from cost to revaluation or revaluation cost model, that also will have to be disclosed. That's a policy disclosure which will also have to come. That will also have to be disclosed absolutely, right? And with that, we are coming to an end of this case study also. If there are any specific questions on this, we can take. And then I will leave it for general questions to be taken with the board of studies. So, any specific question on the case study specifically if you have, let's discuss now. Otherwise, I would hand it back to the board of studies for taking it forward. Can you explain the difference between loss leader and predatory pricing? Yes shortly. So, see theoretically, the difference is like this. A loss leader is a strategy where I sell something at a low price to get people to come so that they are attracted to buy something else which is at full price, right? How to make them come and start interacting with me in my shop so that I can sell something else to them? So this is a loss leader pricing arrangement. For instance, if you go to some of the, I'll just give a simple example, you might find that some of the restaurants advertise that you will get a basic snack or basic breakfast item on a special discount at price, fifty percent discount at price, right? For example, if you say in Tamil Nadu, idli sambar at fifty percent discount, the price will be offered. The idea is when they come in, they also will have coffee or a fruit juice or a lassi or something which will be at full pricing and where my margins are actually significantly high, right? So, this kind of a thing could be one. In fact, in many higher end restaurants, they make significant margins from the desserts. And by giving the base food at a reasonable price, they try and push the desserts which are at very high margins. So that's a loss leader pricing strategy when it is given at a low below cost. A predatory pricing is where you are consciously selling to below cost or close to cost at a, at a very, very low price to disrupt your competitors, get rid of them. If somebody else is selling at ten rupees next door, you sell at seven, get rid of him. So people don't go to him, come to you. So after some time, he is out of business, then you may probably increase it from seven to fifteen. That is predatory pricing, right? Predatory pricing is generally very aggressive to try and grab the market from competitor. Yeah, sorry, I think that answers that. So if there are no, yeah, if there are no other questions on this, I would hand over back to the board of studies for them to deal with any generic questions on the paper etcetera.
Okay sir. Uh on behalf of all the students, it is my privilege to extend a heartfelt vote of thanks to C A T V Balasubramanian sir. For taking out time from his busy schedule to share his insights with us today. Sir, your session was not in, not only informative but also inspiring. The way you connected practical challenges with professional applications gave our student a fresh perspective that will surely guide them in their journey ahead. Despite the demands of your professional commitments, you choose to dedicate this time to us and we are truly grateful for your generosity and encouragement. Once again, thank you sir for your valuable time and word of wisdom. We look forward to more such interaction in the future. Thank you so much sir. Student, this is a time to put your questions. In a last session, there was a query regarding some strategic models. Now I can discuss with you value chain. Students, if you have some specific query, you can ask, otherwise I am discussing with you about value chain. Okay, students, let me know guide you with the example of the value chain of one of the world's leading pharmaceutical companies. This will help you understand how Porter's value chain framework work in practice. Remember, it is not just a theoretical model, it is a strategic tool that helps us break down a business into its key activities. Showing how each stage, how each activities add value to competitive advantage. Students, before we dive into our example, let us understand what Michael Porter's value chain means, okay? The idea is simple. Every company creates value through set of activities, there are N number of activities from which a company creates value. And these activities can be broken down miserly in two categories. First is primary activity and second is support activity. Primary activities are those activity, those are directly linked to create, produce, deliver of products and services. Primary activities are those activity which are directly linked to create, produce or deliver the product or services. These includes inbound logistics, operations, outbound logistics, marketing and after sale services. Support services are the services enable and support the primary activities. They include from infrastructure, human resource management, technological development and procurement, okay? The value chain helps us in identifying the area. Please note that it helps us in identifying the area where value can be created. Where cost occurs and where competitive advantage can build. Think, think it like a roadmap showing how an idea becomes a product and reaches the customer in the most effective way possible. Now let us apply this framework to a leading pharma company, okay? First, primary activities, in primary activity, it is inbound logistics. The company source activity, the pharma company source active pharmaceutical ingredients, raw materials, biological materials from all around the world. To ensure quality, it relies on strong supplier relationship and strict regulatory compliances. It means in inbound, in inbound logistic, which is first part of primary activities. It includes your linkage with supplier, relation with supplier, how you are obtaining your material, okay? How you are getting initial services from various resources, okay? Second is operations here, here in the pharma company where science meets scale. The company runs large R and D labs. In pharmaceutical companies, company runs large pharmaceutical labs, invest billions into clinical trials and maintain high tech manufacturing facilities to produce drugs, okay? Therefore, this, this operations is related with manufacturing, okay? This stage is very, very crucial because product development timelines can stretch ten to fifteen years, okay? Third, third is outbound logistic. Once approved, once approved, now you have to distribute, how you will distribute? Medicines are distributed through wholesalers, hospitals, pharmacies and even through digital platforms, okay? For in first, remember supplier relation. In second, first, first was inbound logistic supplier relation, second was operations, operations. Second was operations, operations relevance of R and D and significant investment and third is outbound logistic where, where you have to distribute through some channels, okay? Coal chain logistics and global supply network is very, very crucial for timely delivery of medicines, okay? Now, fourth, fourth is marketing and sales. In marketing and sales, you have to make awareness, give education. The company educates doctors, run awareness programs, negotiate with governments and position its drugs in market. And fourth one, fourth one is services support continuous after sale services like digital platform, digital health app, post marketing surveillance and assistance program for affordability. All were primary. Now, support, support activities are infrastructure. Global legal, regulatory and compliance system ensure that every product meet respective department's guidelines or country specific guidelines. It, this is infrastructure. Second is human resource management, hiring world-class scientists, researchers, data analyst, sale professionals cover this area. After this technology, technology you all know, now the pharma, pharma leaders invest heavily in A I driven drug discovery, biotech collaboration and digital health solutions. During the pandemic, during the COVID period, advanced platforms were developed using this, this pillar, okay? Procurement, procurement again is linked with, somewhere linked with your inbound logistics because it covers strong partnership with suppliers for specialized techniques, lab equipments, clinical trial services, et cetera. By analyzing this value chain, we can, we can see how pharma companies builds competitive advantage. Its R and D and technological investment, its regulatory infrastructure, its supply chain resilience, ensure availability of drugs in case of crisis. This example shows how the value chain is not just theory but a practical tool understanding competitive positioning, efficiency and long-term profitability. A company's success doesn't come from one activity alone. It comes from how all activities and how all activities connect with each other. The value chain helps us to see connectivity of these activities. Students, please go ahead and raise your query if you have any query you may ask. Okay, otherwise I am winding up this session. Mr. Saurav Sanjay Saman, Samay Nathan. Okay. To all the students who joined today, thank you for your active participation and your questions. Your interest made the session even more meaningful. Keep learning, keep exploring and most importantly, keep practicing. And don't ignore conceptual understanding. Again, I am repeating conceptual understanding for this paper is must. If you have good conceptual understanding, you can easily crack this exam. Even you can easily get more than sixty percent marks very simple manner, okay? Therefore, to clear this exam, you need, you need is planning, conceptual understanding and proper strategy. If you go ahead with proper strategy and planning, I am sure you will be hundred percent successful with good marks, okay? Wishing you all the best in your preparation and your coming exam. Once again, a big thank you to C A Balasubramanian sir and to everyone who made this section a success. Thank you, thank you everyone.